Councilmember Emerald Weith.
President.
Very good. Looks like we have the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Charlie and Company from OLA Troop, this is Troop 21? Yeah, I think so, okay. Y'all want to come on up and introduce yourselves?
There's no pressure, there's tens of people watching this online.
Yeah, there's millions of people watching this meeting, yes sir. Tell us who you are, what school you go to.
I'm James Moore and I go to Mara School.
Okay, and you're Troop 21 OLA, right?
I'm Abe Thomas and I go to Mara School.
Viveth and I go to Shambly Middle School.
Charlie, Viveth, not Weith.
I feel like I need to point out that he's pronouncing his name incorrectly.
Yeah? Got it, got it, got it. Would y'all mind leading us in the pledge this evening? Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank y'all.
Good job, guys.
All right. If someone would be so kind as to approve the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the agenda as prepared by staff.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agenda, any discussion on that item? All in favor? And that is unanimous. All right, any announcements this evening? Nothing? Okay, good.
So they're not here for that? I'm not here to make an announcement or presentation?
No.
Okay. You don't want to skip you any Shambly pins or anything like that?
We can do that.
Let's do that.
We can do that.
We have that.
We don't, we have to get somebody, have to get somebody to go fetch something.
I mean, your hair, you need a, you need a pin for your stash?
Kristen, do we have that stuff available not to put you on the spot?
See what you have in the souvenir drawer.
We'll add an item to the agenda.
They need, they need some bling.
Three of them.
Well, we'll move on down.
Just let me take a piece of furniture from the lobby.
Pan or pan?
Yeah, we need to keep a supply of those on hand. All right, we'll move on down then to the approval of the minutes. We have two items on there.
Motion to approve the minutes from the City Council Public Hearing Work Session, April 11th, as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the work session minutes. Any discussion on that item? All in favor? And then down to the...
Motion to approve the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes from April 16, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes. Any discussion on that item? All in favor? That is unanimous. This evening we have a second read, which is the Millage Cap Amendment. Madam City Attorney? Are we headings only?
Motion to allow the City Attorney to read headings only.
A motion and a second for headings only, any discussion? All in favor?
This is an ordinance to amend the Charter of the City of Shambly, Georgia, Article 1, Section 3, ad valorem taxes, powers, rate, to clarify that the ad valorem millage rate associated with general obligation bonds and other special assessments does not count toward the millage rate limit for regular ad valorem taxes. And the text simply provides that the amount of millage associated with general obligation bonds, intergovernmental contract revenue bonds, or any other short or long-term indebtedness of the city and special tax districts should not count as part of the eight mil limit in the charter.
Motion to adopt the ordinance amendment as presented. I do want to read the background summary just for clarification. Our city charter currently provides that the millage rate imposed for ad valorem taxes cannot exceed eight mils. The proposed amendment would clarify that the ad valorem millage rate associated with general obligation bonds and other special assessments does not count towards the millage rate limit for regular ad valorem taxes.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Millage Cap Amendment, as stated by the City Attorney. Any discussion on that? All in favor? That is unanimous. Takes us down to Staff Action Items. We have the purchase of 3220 Cumberland Drive.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion approving the purchase of 3220 Cumberland Drive and authorizing you to sign closing documents to complete this purchase.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the purchase of 3220 Cumberland Drive and allow the mayor to sign, as stated by the City Attorney, about any discussion on that? All in favor? Licensing and Revenue Coordinator Position.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the creation of a Licensing and Revenue Coordinator Position as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Licensing and Revenue Coordinator Position as submitted. Any discussion on that? All in favor? The Georgia Department of Transportation Procurement Policy.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Georgia Department of Transportation Procurement Policy as submitted.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the Georgia Department of Transportation Procurement Policy as submitted by staff. Any discussion on that item? All in favor? That is unanimous. 2024 Roadway Resurfacing Project Bid Award.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the notice of award to Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction, Inc. for the 2024 roadway resurfacing project in the amount of $1,889,534.18.
Second, again and again and again and again, let the bidding begin.
Have a motion and a second to approve the 2024 roadway resurfacing project bid award as submitted by staff. Any further discussion on that item?
Can we round up next time?
What's that?
Can we just round up next time?
Sure.
To the 18 cents.
All in favor? That is unanimous. Broad Street Streetscape.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to award the Broad Street Streetscape Contract to GMC Architects and to authorize the mayor to sign a contract for the work upon finalization of project cost by the interim city manager of GMC, cost the project not to exceed $180,000 without additional approval by the City Council.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the Broad Street Streetscape proposal by GMC and for the authorizing of the mayor to sign the contract as stated by Councilmember Weith. Any further discussion on that item?
Councilmember Weith, can you just give us a brief overview of how you find it on GMC?
So after going through the RFQ documents that were sent out and looking at what the packets were received from the three bidders, I want to first say that I don't take issue with staff's recommendation based upon the information they received and the presentations they were given. However, what they did not have was the additional background that council and mayor had after the work we spent last year doing the initial development work. My feelings were that to go with a new company at this point would be to start the process all over and would delay the project further down the road when we really want to be moving dirt before this year is over. Therefore GMC, who has done all the preliminary work with us, seemed to be the best fit.
Thank you for that.
Any further discussion on that item? All in favor? That is unanimous. All right, we are almost done there. Discover Shambly Advisory Committee Hotel Year Appointment.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Razib Ektifar of Spies and Sky Hotel to the Discover Shambly Advisory Council, the term expiring February 1, 2026. This is one of the hotel year spots on that committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint, and I'm not going to try that name, you want to try it?
Razib Ektifar.
Razib Ektifar. As the hotel year appointment to the Discover.
I'm sorry, I actually misread my notes, it's Eftikar.
Eftikar.
And I have it spelled phonetically in my notes, and I still get it wrong.
Well, he's, he's about to be appointed.
Yes, he is.
Any further discussion on that item? All in favor? All right. Congratulations, Mr. Eftikar. All right, we are down to the three items, looks like we got four items here. PZ 2024, this is 5075 Peachtree Boulevard, this is Dumpster Enclosure.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request with the following conditions. For 5075 Peachtree Boulevard, number one, the development shall be constructed in substantial conformity with the site plan received by the Planning and Development Department dated and received on March 8, 2024, with revisions required by conditions of approvals reviewed and approved by the Planning and Development Director. Two, the enclosures shall be constructed with the design and materials similar to and are complementary with the existing primary structure on site.
And are these conditions, oh, second. And are these, uh, uh, conditions, staff recommendations or anything outside of that?
I had nothing outside of that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve 5075 Peachtree Boulevard with conditions as stated by Councilmember Weith. All in favor? That is unanimous. Down to 2800 Northeast Expressway.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to approve, sorry, excuse me. I'd like to approve staff recommendations or variance requests under the following conditions. Dumpster closure shall not be placed among Johns Road Northeast. The site should be limited to two closures. The closure shall be constructed with a design and material similar to and/or complementary with the existing primary structure. I did strike out the third amendment, which was to the closure should be located between the buildings. As the applicant has stated, they, there's two separate businesses, two separate parking lots, so I'd like to grant them the relief to be able to have two structures.
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion on this item?
And because I was not here on Thursday, I did watch on the video, and that was going to be my question as well. So thank you for doing that.
All right, all in, all in favor? Jimmy? All right, that is unanimous. And then 5410 New Peachtree Road.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance request with the following conditions. Development should be constructed in substantial conformity with the site plan received by Planning and Development dated March 4, 2024, with revisions required by conditions of approval as reviewed and approved by Planning and Development Director. And the enclosure shall be constructed with the design and materials similar to and/or complementary with the existing primary structure on site.
Second.
Very good, we have a motion and a second to approve with conditions as stated by Councilmember Weith. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? That is unanimous. We are down to 3996 Longview Drive, this is Defense Appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to defer this item until the June council meeting.
Work session?
We usually vote on the council, and then when it's a work session, that's fine.
Which one?
We don't normally vote on these things on the Tuesday, so that's the council meeting, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't know if you wanted further discussion on it, or if we were just going to...
I don't think we need to do that.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to defer this item to the June council meeting. Any further discussion?
Just so I'm crystal clear on this, we have 60 days to, before we have to come up with approval or denial, correct?
That's correct.
60 days from the time of application, I didn't know exactly when that started. Isn't that what the rules say? 60, 60 days?
No, it's, it's 60 days from the hearing date.
The hearing date, okay.
That's right, 60 days from the hearing.
I may misheard, but I thought I heard, but yes.
I just want...
And we can always extend if we're still not ready.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, all in favor?
No, there is another discussion. What is the purpose of deferring?
I'm not clear on what I'm, exactly what the voting are and what the other options are.
Okay.
I'm not here to, I'm not here to convince you.
I, I think, no, I understand. I, I think that 60 days, I, this applicant needs relief. And voting on whether or not we support the interpretation of the code in two months is not giving this applicant, applicant relief. This, the issue is, do we support what our Development Department stated in his interpretation of the code? Then, beyond that, this is not a matter of do we support giving this applicant a variance, it's simply do we support what our Development Department has stated? And the longer that we put that off, the longer it's going to take us to change anything in the code that we think needs to be changed that, that has come before us. So what we're voting on right now is making this applicant spend at least two more months waiting for relief.
It's one month, it's one month, but...
Okay, we're waiting a month, okay.
But I spoke, I spoke with him this afternoon about if he would be okay with that, because I told him there were some questions and what the next step should be. Because that's really what I'm concerned about, is the next steps in this process that would be.
Sure.
And I don't have clear definition of that. I know what the agenda item is tonight, and I know what we're, we could vote on tonight, but I don't know what the next steps could or should be. And I was hoping that when we have the chance, but if others feel that way as you do, then I would, you know, you could always do a substitute motion and, and, because we have a motion and a second, so that has to be voted on, or...
Sure. I'm, I'm willing to let your motion stand and for us to have discussion in the next 30 days to determine our, the proper steps that we're going to need to take.
I think you can work on both of those items together.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? And that is unanimous. All right, we are down to public comments. That is anyone wishing to address council this evening. Rules for public comments, the mayor is the presiding officer. All remarks shall be addressed to the City Council as a body, not to individual members. Anyone wishing to speak shall come to the microphone, give your name and address to the city clerk. Limit remarks to three minutes unless further time is granted by council. Not speak a second time until everyone has been, has been allowed a chance to speak. And please do not speak unless you have the microphone. Anyone wishing to address council this evening? Come on up.
Come on up, Karen.
I'm the official timekeeper, so when we hit three minutes, it's going to be abrupt and I'll, I'll cut you off, but it will, I just don't want to scare anybody, I've done that before.
Be very short.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, I'll do my civic duty today. Kira Palmer, and I am opening a business at 5350 on Peachtree. And we are on month four, I believe, of the process of not having this business open. I would have liked the council to know that Councilmember John Mesa has been a huge help in this. But I wanted to bring to your attention that part of the reason our business has been declined for four months, up until last Friday, was because of photography and content creation. I don't know if you guys have read my email, because I did email several of you. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention and to the public as well, because, you know, given the times, content creation and photography is a huge part of operating a business, as all of our neighbors are doing on Peachtree. And I think it may be something that the council maybe can take up, you know, internally to discuss it, because I've lost a lot of money these last several months of lost income, paying rent and all that stuff. We followed every direction to the T, checked zoning, it wasn't forbidden. We went through the lease, all of the things we were supposed to do. And yeah, so just to say, it's been an absolute nightmare. And had I known that it would be this way, we probably would not have chosen Shambly to open our business. But I love Shambly, I was a resident of Brookhaven for about 15 years before moving recently. And we chose Shambly because we know how amazing the city is and the up and coming businesses here, and we're very excited to be a part of it. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention and say, of course, Mr. Mesa's been really great these last few weeks in helping this process along. But we have had to submit forms, the exact same forms, five and six times. It's, it's, it's been very emotional, but, you know, a lot of my personal savings into this. And, but I'm obviously very thankful that it's starting to move in the same direction. But it's been another week without any answers to a floor plan situation. And every day that we're not open, I'm losing hundreds and hundreds of dollars, thousands, thousands every month. So with that said, just wanted to bring that to attention. You know, we're, we're very happy to be coming to this community, but it may be it's something that we can address moving forward this year. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council this evening? Nobody? All right, do we, yeah, yeah? Come on up. We don't buy.
Hello, my name is Jasmine. I don't know if I should say I want to address the council, but I have a question about the ruling on my property that was done for dumpster enclosure. I know you said you granted the relief, but I'm unclear, like, where else can I put the dumpster if not, if it's not Johnson? Or should I talk about that later, or just wanted to clarify that?
We'll clarify that after the meeting, if you...
Okay, thank you, that's all.
Anyone else? That's it? All right. Do we have executive session this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session for matters related to personnel, pending litigation, and real estate matters.
All right, we have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. All in favor? All right. All right, we have to step out for executive session, and we'll be back shortly.
Yeah, I'm waiting on John to get done.
Oh, okay.
I have to call him up, very...
Okay, okay, okay. Uh, we're, they decided to come out for a picture if you want to take one.
We actually had to consult the lawyer if it was okay or not.
I know.
She said it's okay.
Can we get a group photo?
What'd you get, Sharon?
Oh, I didn't know what she was...
Oh, 221.
Oh, 221. Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
I'll share it on our social media.
Thanks, guys.
My cousin left, so... Time to go.
No, he's right there.
He's right there?
Yeah. Oh, great, great. I think I remember I talked to her last week. I'm sorry, I'm talking to my neighbor. But she said that, you know, something this week, it's sort of, um, crazy. Oh, I mean, it's been like everything, you know, just myself, you know. So I'm like, you know, it's all mine, and it's, it's so much...
Well, you know, we're not happy with it, she also... I'm sure you understand, but our job is to check.
Yeah. Oh, I mean, I understand there's problems, I get it, man. And that's, you know, and that's saying to it, I'm, 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 I'm really appreciate what you might do. I'm not trying to just pull that, I have to push because I have, like, my entire life savings. So I should everything, so I have to be, have to be going, I'm so frustrated. I'm not trying to be difficult or anything, but, you know, maybe... It was in John, he called me, he was like, you actually got into Hawaii, and that's why I really want to... All that, is that... So what it was, is this makes you, I mean, I'm on the back, I'm, I'm, I was going to be my office on board every single day. I own a social media company. And so I was trying to explain to you, partners, like, we can't be in touch for, um, for a while. I'm like, well, I'm not, I don't do that, I don't offer that, I have to quit that. I mean, I have my personal, like, stuff that I use in my company, but I, like, that's not part of what we're offering. And then every time I'm like, trying, it's like adding on to, a bunch of expressions. Yeah. Okay, well, that can't be right, because every business on the street is doing it, and I'm like, happy to try all the social media, but they're all doing it, and so you can't function as a business without that. And so that's what we're doing, you know, like, there's just, there's like this little office that come in, and they take pictures for their social media, you know, but I mean, you literally, that's what I do every day. It's not like I have all this amazing, which would be amazing, if I could force that, you know, so... It just, it was, it just got mixed up on how, I guess, we present it, and then there's not... Yeah, and so I, well, I talked to John about what the city council did last year in terms of, like, the zoning and some of that stuff, talking to him, and he said that, um, there had been another situation where somebody was operating under that, but without, without a license in a non-commercial area, there was a huge problem with that. And then part of the reason why they were... And then part of the reason why they were adjusting, um, that step was because of how Atlanta, the metro and all the areas become kind of a hub for, like, movies and commercials and stuff like that. And you have to go through like a whole process to be able to do stuff like that. And that's why they've been, the cities were trying to put, like, some things in place that doesn't happen in the housing, all the permits and stuff like that. It's like, so you're just kind of like, we're put in that box because we haven't, like, really determined whether that would like our own business. So, if you're operating within your four walls and someone, you know, someone comes in to take pictures and little videos, like, you're, I don't know if this is like speaking in foreign language, but like, if you're doing like a course tradition, doing like educational content, you sell on like Instagram, for example, which is what I do. You need like a nice little background to do that, right? And you know what I do, I just sit at my phone and mic, turn it, and actually close it, you know, to, you know, do that, Sarah, it's not everything complicated, but. Yes, yeah, and so, I also, I also, uh, I'm like a women's entrepreneur, like, I work in a group, and I wanted to be able to do stuff like, you know, like, educational workshops, anything like that. And we talk about business and investing and stop marketing and media and marketing and branding and all those things. Finance and Zayn, um, she's one of my good friends, but fractional CFO, and she teaches, uh, small business centers, how to manage your finances, you know? Something I'm really passionate about helping people in business, and so, that was part of that too. So, it was just, it was kind of, it seems like it's a mixed useful thing, but it's weird, we're not doing it in areas, and it's very simple, so. Um, but again, like I said, I just, you know, I put a lot of money, you know, backstop into this, and, um. Yeah, 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 so. I mean, I'm in there almost every day, it's like hanging out, like, and I don't have, I haven't, I'm not made of that, like. Oh, no, no, I mean, it was already, that, that was why I wanted that space, because it was literally perfect for what I needed, I mean, just a big open space. Yeah, so, there's no construction that needs to happen, and there's no, the one thing that I did have to undo before, um, the charpenting chair. Because I had to owner make sure that the bathroom was ADA compliant, um, so you know, I might have got the work in a bar, like little bars, some of the chairs, um, so I just want to not have that, um. So, and then, um, there was no fire extinguisher, so I didn't really solve that, I just couple of things, I appreciate that. No, I mean, as soon as we have a pretty, like, door, which I don't have, there's no, I mean, it's like a couch, like desk, something like that, it's not, um, there's no construction whatsoever. But that's again, I like the space, because it was just a, I mean, almost just like a room, like that, and just, whoever had it, I think it was, um, from what I understand, I think it was a little, um, like antique type shop. Yeah, so, we took over one half of it, and then that coffee shop that's in front of me, it's on the other side, and then they had some. Yeah, well, I mean, because we haven't, I mean, I haven't really done anything. And part of that too, is I, because I'm a marketer, I own a social media company, I work with businesses all over the city, and, and I was in a, I think it was a beer, like, I have a restaurant, it's not been coming until like August or September, but we're like hosting on social media, because you want to, like, build like the hype, you know? And so, um, our neighbors actually, like, couple of years down, had them come in, like, model for some, like, Instagram thing, when I got like a CC assist for her, like, on the door, I'm like, oh. I'm just trying to, like, build hype, I'm not doing anything, it's just, it's been a, it's been hard, it's there, yeah. But I'm trying to make sure that we're doing it appropriately and all that, so, um, you know, my, my boyfriend's one of the managers at Blue Top, and we, you know, what he wants to do is, we'll be, and that's what I want to be, you know? Thank you, guys, I know, I know it's a headache, and I'm dealing with somebody who's like following a whole time, it's not fun, and I'm sorry for that, but I'm like, I'm gonna have to. Yeah, and that's why I'm like, I, I have a super member, so, you know, where you go from home, and you have to do that and all that. But, my, let's, let's make sure that we're explaining the right thing here and being clear on what's happening, and, um. What, what can we do, how can I help, and all that, and, yeah. I would, I would, if I knew this was gonna happen, I would have gone somewhere else, because I, I mean, I'm lost, and it only took me three weeks to the furniture, you know? And so, I think, well, it was interesting too, and it was part of the, like, I'll take H D L, like, H D L system. Um, like, we first put in our application for first of February, um, about the country thing, so we could already, all their process, got ready for anything, and stuff like that. So, I came back, we put in our stuff, and then, I think, six weeks later, just like, everything, so it started calling up, and they had my email address wrong, they had, like, all of the stuff, so it just, it kind of started off, like, as a headache from, like, that size things, and then. So, obviously, it's just been mine, so we don't think that something as simple as just, like, putting furniture in the opening, I didn't have to do any construction, I had to, so I thought I'd mark, like, in the margin, probably be open, so, um. But, I mean, obviously, last year, I think I prepared for the worst and things, so, um, the, that was the lesson, but again, I mean, I, now that it's been, I mean, I just said, it is emotional because it's just like a high level, you know? That's why I have to be calling up, but I do love the community, I would be a helping man, I want to be a good member of the community, and, um, hopefully, after the next four weeks, things will be very smooth, and we'll be great residents, business residents, and all that, so. Yeah, thank you.
So, has she been on the road?
Yeah. Get something, you know, if you're married, go come here to, I'll have sale relationships, you can just stand out, you can't, you can't stand the leader talent, you gotta, you gotta have them, you know?
And we think that the children, I think, I think it's now, yes, and why not, and that's, so, I'm sure it's, can't be more than, can't be more than.
Sorry, that's, that's. Also, I think, I think, I think, sometimes it's, I'm saying that it's, I'm saying that it's, I'm saying that it's, I'm saying that it's. There's a bit of, but I'll, um, sometimes I just, I usually, uh, I'm not even that, so.
This is a baby, I think it was a baby.
I lost Dan.
You got my email there? You got my email there?
Uh, I have this.
What did I say?
It's working.
It's, hmm, it really is not working. It's the temporary fix that they expect, maybe, to get a part in at least to make it work permanently. But, um, I'd say it's a fifty-fifty balance.
I have an update in AMR, so you should be here Friday. She goes on a little ceremony and, uh, definitely. It's issue.
I mean, maybe not about thirteen, certainly not.
I'm fine, how are you?
But it's a, it's a fifty-fifty balance because we can do, um, when it's trying. But the person who's involved in my staff is out there. So, you know, but, um, this is actually.
Well, why are you calling me? I work on.
Um, it's actually just, um, personally.
So, it's starting again. So, what's my first call number that's on five? That usually is the number that I get all time from outside of the room. Exactly. Somebody just called me somehow. They told me I was sparring a lot of times and, uh, turned back and went on a personal party. There's a lot of people on my work line. Three times that I've had them in my home now. The oldest one, the one that was, uh, I said the little numbers were the last, uh, the little ones.
Yeah, I don't, I don't even know if I still play that.
Yeah, because the bad pa- it'll pop up in the series.
That's why.
I, I put on the calendar all day, um.
We'll need that.
I'm pretty sure they're going to.
Yeah, we probably said, uh, many tours or whatever. So, as long as.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure it's before. Well, I mean, the one that I. And I told them that, um, that if they were to do access, that they're going to have to stand by the door. Because that's the mental office, so they're already aware of that. It's just, uh, I'm like, is it on?
I believe that's, probably, um, that can see who's there, unless you're in, or they can't, or is, get up and actually.
Yeah.
They, they get that over their head, because you're looking at a porch for work.
Yeah.
But we can't get away from the concert.
I like the one that I have to go as people tell me, um, so maybe one or two times as a work assignment. But when many people start calling, I'm like, oh, then you have someone at the door. Um, so I'm like, okay, well, you know, which is everyone, if someone can help really. Some kind of, uh, accident or something like that, so.
Yeah, that's, he's, he's, uh, actually, I hope he, he should be there tomorrow for it. So, I don't really know very well. It's not too bad, but it's also, please, that system that comes with, um, it's a.
Oh, is that moving or something?
A song. No, it's, um, no, they're already gone. No, they have, they have people that's in the news. And they're going to, they're going to start this, but it shouldn't happen.
Uh, yeah, that's really important, and, uh, especially today, just letting out, um, celebrations, um.
I think it's. Yeah. All right, see you.
See you, Sean. Okay.